Okay, we're live.
We're not ready.
We're live, but we're not ready.
Say anything.
Okay.
Hey, Jim, thanks for dropping that off today.
You're welcome. I am in the package delivery service, you know.
That's a free commercial.
Did you get the bill that goes with that?
Empty a FedEx maker on the car.
Okay, we're on. Let's, uh, you ready? Okay. Ready? Okay, well, we're gonna go. Jim, when you're ready.
All right, this special meeting, and this is about budget. And we left off getting ready to go through the capital improvement plan. Now, we don't spend a lot of time on this, and we won't now. Each department will talk about their individual items when we get to it, but we'll do sort of a, kind of an overview, and I'll point out a few items specifically. After I do this, we'll have... Who wants to go first, Rhonda or Don? It's a good thing to know that.
I'm not gonna choose.
You guys have to choose. All right, Rhonda gets to go first, and Don's last.
Ladies first. We don't want to make Rhonda sit through Don, do we?
No, we don't. So...
It's mercy control.
As you go into looking at the capital improvement plan, if you want to put up... Now, this is not out on the website quite yet, but it will be. I think that Annette may be doing that right this aft- yet this afternoon. And Stephanie, does that go into OpenGov itself, or... So, on the website, if you go, OpenGov is one of the links. Is it at the bottom, or is it farther up at this point? Well, we'll take a look maybe after we do the CIP plan. Or, you want to pull it up now, Eric?
I'll just underline.
So, on the city's website, folks who want to take a look, OpenGov is a toggle at near the bottom. If you click on it, you can go in here and look at a lot of information. We've got the budget, the, all the general fund. Is everything in there now, or are we still missing a couple of pieces? Everything's in there. No capital projects. One of the things, on the left side, Stephanie, is that where it will be, near the bottom?
Here.
What?
Current year.
Under current year, if you click on that.
And then now scroll down for the attachment.
So, there's a few documents down here now, the budget PDF for the current year, CIP from last year, and the November 20 treasures report. In this area is where, is Annette... Annette was gonna try to get this up yet this afternoon, so as, as people want to be able to look at this at their leisure, they should, it'll be in that area on, under OpenGov. OpenGov will then also have the annual budget in it, and you can toggle through it. Is what you see on the site there now, you can see the breakdown between different types of expenditure categories. And you can break it down, is, people can kind of break it down in different ways, whether it's by the type, type of expenditure, whether it's for debt service, an internal service fund, a general government. What?
He needs to switch the fiscal year, the show in 22.
Yeah. So, now you can, you can look at your overall budget by these categories, public safety, which is fire and police. You can also break it down in other ways. The easiest way is probably with the canned reports at the top, which is different than what Eric is looking at now. You can, you have the ability to look at expenditures by category, whether it's personnel costs, or capital projects, whether it's supplies, et cetera. But that is a matter of people wanting to take a look again, yeah. And here you see, as you can look at the different types of expenses within a budget area, within that, within a given department. So, people can break this down in a lot of different ways. And I just encourage people who have an interest in knowing more about how the, how it works, and can look, like to see things, you know, drill down on things. This is a good way to do it. You have the ability to look at this, whether it is in the bar graph, the way it is there. You can click and do pie charts. You can, so for folks who like to look at numbers in different ways, you have the ability to take a look at, at it, you know, in the format that makes the most sense to you. And this is a freebie for today, because that is not what we were planning on doing, but I thought, like, we do need to make sure that people know that it's there. We'll cover it again next Wednesday when we talk about budgets. By that point, all the information will be out there. But this is a good way to get a, again, dig in as you have a desire to get to know more about what's in our budget book, and what's being presented. All right, thank you. All right, and in your binders, this is the, it... Stephanie, this goes straight like this into the OpenGov and that PDF document that'll be attached in it. Is that correct?
Yeah, it should be.
So, it'll end up looking exactly like this. This, we have a software program that we pull this out of, and then we load it up in the same way. And we have it broken down, and it'll be in the budget book in, it's in two formats. The first is this projects and funding source by department. You see here that begins with the development department. The items that the development department is bringing, presenting for the five-year capital improvement plan. If you notice across the top, the first, well, four of their six items are directly a result of the last goal-setting session that we had. Desire to put money back into the sidewalk replacement program. We haven't had money set aside for that for, since probably 2013. And we tried to figure out how, I mean, there was a desire to see more money go into these areas than what we have here, but one of them was trying to figure out where is the right balance with, with the other needs that are out there.
Are we gonna see that program come up in a work session sometime soon?
We're gonna have to. We will have to, and I think with, based on the number there for the first year, FY22, as you see in there, the sidewalk replacement program, the first, if you pull that down just a tad, Bill, so that you can see the years, so that when you're looking at it by fiscal year, fiscal 22, and thank you, Bill, the sidewalk replacement program has 25,000 set aside. It's not enough to do a major thing, but I think what we had talked about, Eric was thinking that that might be an avenue where we can target a few specialized blocks that we would like to see, and then do an incentive that we are offering for homeowners to take advantage of.
Allocate a few dollars to go towards matches for homeowners, and then allocate a few dollars to tackle projects that are a little bit large.
Correct. So, as this moves forward, I think you're gonna see Eric and Nick, their departments working a little together to try to figure out what makes sense for an incentive program. Again, with 25,000 the first year, we're not gonna be able to touch a significant project.
Well, but you're looking at 200, almost 250,000 over the next five years.
But you're looking over a five-year period.
That's a lot of sidewalk.
Yep. Yes. So, you see the other areas that we hit on. We've had money for housing demo in the past, and out of that, we've pulled out some money to do matches for some of the housing grants that we've gone after. Well, we've divided that up. We have the city demolition, we have that local match for housing grants, and we also have a rehab program that we're trying to set up separate pots of funds to use as we move forward. And again, that's out of the goal-setting session, some of those primary items that you all wanted to be able to hit on. So, we've taken what was about 50,000 a year and expanded it to that 100-ish thousand a year range. If you look down at the bottom, if you scroll that down for me, Bill, the fire department is in here, and one of the things I just highlighted in here that's a little different than what we've seen in this, in the CIP in the previous years, Chief Truxell has set aside a lot of maintenance activities that need to occur to some of our facilities. And I assume he'll go over those, but as you look at it, even within here, that's, under that station maintenance, it gives a breakdown by year. One thing I would note, his breakdown by year, FY22, 23, 24, doesn't show FY25, and that has to do with, I, I had to make him spread it out, projects out. So, some of what he was hoping to do in the fiscal 22 got pushed out to fiscal 25 in here, just from a lack of funding. If you go over to the next page, Flint Hills Golf Cart, or Golf Course, the one that I have highlighted is golf carts, or cars, as Eric says that they're supposed to be called, for some odd reason. We have, you see here that, I highlighted those because the, the amounts are a little bit higher than they've been in the past, and I think that maybe he should highlight what he's looking at doing that's a little bit different than they've done in the past with the golf cars. Following pa- there's, following page has, it's partway through Park and Rec, and a couple of projects that I wanted to highlight here. Significant project that he's wanting to get done here this next year is Dankworth Playground, some new equipment, and I imagine that'll be a highlight of what he's trying to cover in his budget presentation. A significant one that's on here as well, Snake Alley Stairs, that, that... The stairs that go up Snake Alley are, if you were to look at them, there's some significant problems with them. And we've identified 100,000 in here, funded with GO bonds. I don't know that that's enough, but, you know, we're a little early in the process to know what the actual figure is gonna be, but I, I wouldn't be surprised to see that figure be a decent amount higher than that. Following page, you got the police, and then Public Works. I don't know why I highlighted the buses at the bottom, but I did. One of the items that they've replaced, we, we do match to, to get their bus replacements. They try to use lo- or grant funding as much as possible to get these buses replaced. We do have to do a local match on them, and we've historically used local option sales tax to make that work. One bus in particular to get replaced is not gonna be eligible for a grant, so at some point, we're just gonna have to bite the bullet on that and fund the whole thing out of local option sales tax. Following page has a lot of his projects as well for Public Works. You know, notable ones, the Tiger Grant that we've talked about for way too long, the flood wall projects. And as you look at those, again, you can see the funding source that's listed within. The Tiger Grant shows it's a federal grant. The flood wall, even though we hope to get sales tax funds from the state on, we end up bonding for those. They're general obligation bonds, and they go against our debt capacity. And if we don't receive our funding from the state, we have to pay for those out of our debt service levy. But you see three different separate amounts in there for the Tiger Grant, again, the two for the flood wall, actually, and then the associated project, the Great Places Splash Pad, 400,000, that we're looking to put about 100,000 of grant funds into, to make that, that portion work. Following page, Nick covers projects in a couple of areas. I mean, he had the Public Works before. This is into street sewers apartment. A lot of the projects are this, the storm sewer system. We have a division of duties that gets a lot of crossover between Don and Nick, and takes a lot of participation or cooperation between them to make these work. Some of them are solely Nick, some of them are solely Don, and then you got others that are a mixture, and it gets a little hard for them to know who should be planning what on it. Don says that Nick should take it all. I did note up here, the Market Street, the Force Main replacement, and then the Market Basin sewer separation. Couple of those, the 2 million for the Force Main, and the 1.3 for the sewer separation. That's 3.3 million dollars of work that's getting coordinated along with the Tiger Grant, and we're funding out of TIF, TIF bonds, as you see in there. This area has a lot being prioritized towards it. You also, I mean, you have the South Street Lift Station replacement at 4.7 million. If you look at Mississippi River Interceptor, over the course of the four years, that's 11.8 million. Is that the total for the whole project, Nick, or is there even another year beyond that?
That should be it.
That'll be it for that one. And you see...
Sorry, the South Street, the Interceptor, and the Cascade EQ tank, they're all in one corridor of connection, so there might be overlap of design with all three of them.
Yeah. So, even though we have a lot of projects that are listed here that are broken up into different pieces, they all interconnect into each other, and making them fit together, I mean, even though we have them broken out like this on the CIP, making them work together may, may be a little bit messy to, to get done, and it may, you may see years change a little bit, too, in amounts.
On the Cascade and on the Mississippi River Interceptor, we've got those dollars allocated in the annual, we're just saving those dollars, right, till we spend them in the 2025s?
If you look at how that's set up, we talk about using revenue bonds.
Right.
Probably SRF, state revolving loan funds.
Yeah.
Whether those are all done in one large state revolving loan fund, or we have two or, two or three separate SRF loans that we're doing, I'm not sure.
But are we looking at spending those dollars in the fiscal year indicated, or are we...
Spending.
Okay, so the project work will be done, so we're gonna do a million dollars of work in '23, 3.8 in '24.
In a perfect world.
Right, but that, on here, that's how I need to read that, right?
Yep, correct, yes. That's how, how to read that. That's the year we would spend it. And they function a little different, and I don't know if you're asking about it, but a lot of it, if we do a GO bond, we borrow the money upfront. These, we do drawdowns as we expend it. So, they've, they do, they're on a complete reimbursement basis when we're doing the SRF. But looking at the dollar amounts here, you see that Mississippi River at 11.8, that Cascade Equalization Tank at 4.6 million. If you pull the, move that up just a little bit, Bill, you see his main street program, which includes several different major projects that he went over in the five-year road plan. Got about 15 million dollars of work to be done in those major street projects. Looking at the next page, has a lot of equipment. It also has Washington Street listed at 4.8 million, near the bottom of that sheet. We're looking at using a lot of TIF funds on this, and this is one that we will likely scale back, just because they're, we're too stretched. Again, I need to talk more with Travis to make some recommendations about what to pull out, but just Nick and I talk, and this is one that we see is potentially cutting out million and a half, maybe-ish, somewhere in that neighborhood.
That was some of the fluff design, some of the curb cuts and decorative stuff.
V and K based on design work.
Right.
Jefferson Street, so it's tough to rank it, that estimation, but I'll introduce it.
But if we compared it to the presentation V and K gave last night, we could see, could see significant savings in that project by cutting some of that stuff out, right?
Yeah. Flipping the page, you get the last area is a wastewater treatment plant, Don's area. I don't have anything marked, I don't really care about Don's stuff. Actually, if you turn to the final page on it, I did mark a couple of things with Don's. He's doing some significant work with the SCADA system update, built over three years. I think the plant influent line, that is a... Project for repairing the leak that we've had, and then looking at the same time, maybe increasing capacity of the plant to meet some of our restrictions there that we've kind of addressed in some of the meetings moving forward over the last few months. But we also have there another flood protection project for the plant itself that we looked at using TIF funds to do. So, you see a breakdown, nine pages for you of how the CIP looks broken out by department. I kind of hit on a lot of the, or several of the larger projects. I know that the departments will hit on those as well. They'll also talk a little bit about the equipment that they, that are pieces of, or components of this. I did not go over the individual equipment line items that are there. Hopefully, they address at least the ones that they see as the most significant as part of their budget presentations, but if you have questions about where does something fit in, certainly encourage you to ask. The next section does the projects by funding source. And we kind of covered this a tad last night, but GO bonds, we are general obligation bonds. We're looking at 29 and a half million dollars worth of projects. That includes, that's inclusive of the flood wall projects that we would like to see be able to be paid off by the state sales tax collections, 12 million of it. That's still a large number. And what makes it even larger is that the fact that the TIF funding that we do is all GO bonded, too. Backed by the full faith and credit of the city, counts against our debt capacity. We do, we have a separate allocated funding stream to cover, but still all is part and parcel of what we have to try to cover. As we look in here, this, these two areas are the ones that, that kind of cover the, the main projects that we have to take a look at in terms of how do we keep from getting ourselves too extended. If we're gonna make cuts, it's gonna be into one of, one of these major areas. And the one that makes a big difference under GO bond ability, and our ability to do something with the levy or keep from backloading our projects, is Cascade Bridge.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Well, it's 7 million dollars, and it wasn't on here last time. And we can make it happen, but part of it is, does it keep us from being able to do other projects? And I think that we need to just have that discussion. Where is the right mixture of things to have occur? What, what do you want to make sure that you, that you're willing to trade off as, in this process? You know, the things that I think of, again, Washington Street is, even though it's a TIF-funded project, it still impacts our ability to, we, whether we, it's one of those that if we weren't doing Washington Street, you could theoretically be doing Valley Street as a TIF project. But Valley Street is a, a, a major concern about how you fit that one in, the amount that we spend on Washington Street. Do we need to rethink how, how we're using TIF funds to cover projects that are sewer-related? Are we too stretched? Well, part of that conversation, if the state isn't willing to renegotiate the CSO order, it isn't a whole lot of help to be using TIF funds to do this, because, I mean, this, we're, we're trying to come up with a plan that makes, makes our best use for the whole city. And this may not be the right focus if, if that's potentially off the table. Sunnyside is another project that's not shown on here, but as we look at... Is that four and a half, 5 million a project?
Figure than that, split between the two years, falling to like 6.7.
6.7 million for two years. Those, that project, too, isn't on here, but as Travis is looking at where we are and trying to think about where that project fits, it's part of that discussion about what happens with your ability to fund projects. And that's one where we'd, he had initially thought that he need, may need to give us some numbers that look at a 10-year basis for that, so you can see where they, they line up. But it's hard to look that far out in the future, but again, Cascade is three years' worth of projects in and of itself. If we're trying to be 2, 2 and a half million of, of usage of debt service levy annually, Sunnyside is two to three years' worth of projects for the same, same reason with the size that it is. And you just, the amount of infrastructure needs that we have are, we just cannot get to all of them. There's, there's a reality there that we just can't get to everything that needs done. So, I don't have any answers for you today, but again, the projects that I personally am thinking about, whether they fit in here, the size of Washington, then, and then Valley Street, are the two that I'm not sure that fit in a five-year plan, the way we have it presented. And other, other things to look at, I'm not really sure. Part of it is having some more, more discussion on it.
I'm sorry, Jimmy said the size of Washington, and what was the other one that you're not...
Valley Street.
Thank you.
If you want to look at the next page, I mean, again, this is breaking it out by funding source. When we talk about revenue bonds as a funding source, revenue bonds is paid for by utilities. It's paid for out of the operating revenues from the sewer utility. So, we're looking at about 25 million dollars' worth of work funded by the utility rates in this five-year plan. Again, a good chunk of these are, in fact, almost all of them are Nick's, rather than Don's. So, Don does have his sledge storage building that he has continued to keep out there as a tickler to remind us that we have an, a need that may at any time come up that we have to address. If you want to flip to the next page, we see the projects that are funded out of sales tax. This whole page is sales tax-funded projects. Almost all of it is equipment. Not all of it, but almost all of it is equipment versus, as opposed to projects. But we do about a million a year of local option sales tax money used towards buying various pieces of equipment or doing projects. And if you look at the following page, not only does the sewer fund borrow money to do projects, about 25 million on that five-year basis, but they also do a significant amount just off of their operating revenues on an ongoing basis, a pay-as-you-go for projects and equipment. This list of sewer fund projects is, I guess, not all. It's not all, Don. Some of it, again, is equipment that is split, that Nick uses that's split between the storms, storm sewers, cleaning out storm sewers, and streets. So, they will both have responsibilities for their area. And how can you tell the difference? Well, Don's all have WWTP at the beginning, wastewater treatment plant. Nick's all have, well, have sewer storm water, that have streets, or street sewer at the beginning of them, or sewer rehab, which is the lines themselves. And really, that's kind of the overview of... And really, that's kind of the overview of, of it. Again, we do try to keep a, the CIP is designed to be able to keep a consolidated list of all the projects that are going on across the city on an annual basis. But each of the departments takes responsibility for their, their own areas. Hundred and seven million dollars' worth of items on, on there for a five-year basis. And it's front-loaded to the first two years. To me, that, part of what that says to me is that not everyone has planned out the actual ones that they'll be doing in the out years. Some of the, some of the areas may have a little bit more work in the fifth year that they haven't identified. Some of them have things that they'd like to get done that they know about and have been had it kicked out. And I don't know, Eric, if you'll cover some of the stuff that you had on here that was kicked out.
Actually, the police department took items off of the list. The fire department reduced items and moved them around. I can't remember, we, we moved buses around at least for, as we tried to figure out what we could afford to do that we're using in particular local option sales tax funds to, to cover. But we also had to take stuff out of funding sources, whether it was road use tax or whatever, just because, and move it over to a bonded item just for lack of funds. Any questions on that for now? Otherwise, I talked as long as I planned on, half an hour.
I'm good.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
She mentioned there's sheets in here for local option sales tax and hotel motel. I don't need to go over those if you don't want to. Next week, I will take time to do some, the summary pie charts that we did last year that kind of breaks out by area. I don't have those. I suppose I do, don't I, if I can figure out where? But within the, and I didn't give those to you because your sales tax fund summary sheet has a breakdown of what this goes to. I, I think I'm going to cover this next time because I, I'm going to use the, the pie chart to, to cover it, which I like better than this line item. But you can get an idea as you look at this individually. This, the, this, the sales, sales tax fund, you can see the specific items that we put that money to on an annual basis, whether it's back to the general fund for property tax relief, towards supporting the police department, or for equipment purchases. And the same can be said with hotel motel, but I think I want to cover that next time when I can-
Okay.
-show the charts.
Sounds good.
And not take away from what these folks are doing.
Are you ready, Rhonda? Okay. We're ready for you.
Okay. Well, good afternoon.
Hey, Rhonda, you can take your mask off while you're at the mic. It's easier to hear you.
Sure.
Please.
So I, I pared back my presentation a bit because I knew you had a lot going on tonight and I also-
Did you wave at Don for a reason?
No, I didn't.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just, sorry, Donna.
You've got a lot going on.
It just kind of went that way. I just didn't know.
No. No, I've been, I've been streaming there, your, every Monday night and watching, so I knew you had a long night last night too. But that being said, I still can never seem to resist bringing you handouts. So I did give you a big stack of handouts and I'm just going to mention a couple of those, then I promise to switch to budget and, and focus on that. But I wanted to, to point out a couple. One of those is Hoopla that I think should be the second one in the little stack you have there. This is a service that we started last late spring, early summer. And Hoopla offers kind of one-stop shop for a lot of digital resources. There's movies and TV that you can stream. There's music. There's ebooks and audio. And it is, you know, available all the time for people. To relate a little bit to budget, it is one that doesn't have any wait lists, so that's a really nice compliment to some of our others that do. But one of the things we do then is we do restrict a little bit how much people can use it in a month. We also make it only available to our primary service area folks, being our Burlington residents and our contracting entities. So that helps make it budget-friendly and available to us. But it is a really good one-stop shop, good compliment to Canopy and Freegal and Libby, which you also have brochures for in here. The other one, and this is a brand-new brochure for us, is the Brainfuse Help Now. Brainfuse is, as it says, free homework help online. We used to have tutor.com and that one was real easy. You knew that was online tutoring because it's right in the name, tutoring. This one is also online tutoring, individual, one-on-one, online tutoring, plus lots of other skills-building things available for elementary through high school, even into college and beyond. So I wanted to make sure you had these because they're something I hope you can learn a little bit more about yourself, but also pass them on to people if you know that they can make use of them. Brainfuse is a great resource. It's one of those we probably won't continue if we don't get more use out of it though. You know, again, going back to connecting it to the budget, so we want to make sure that we get the word out about it as well. Several other things in here for you too about some of our other resources, including winter reading that just started this week. So we, similar to summer reading, but much more low-key than a typical summer reading. Also, our kindness clubs, they're, they do monthly projects, so you have a little bit about that. I may have given you our STEAM resources before. I couldn't remember, but as I was doing the presentation, I'll talk a little about some of the outside funding sources that we get. And we have received six STEM awards through the Governor's STEM Advisory Council over the last few years. And that just opened up again to apply for more. I don't know if we'll be applying again this time around, but, but it's been a great help for us. And it mentions in here, our Little Learners. That was a program that we started as an in-person program and when we had to go to more virtual opportunities for people, we now do a weekly kit that families can pick up for kids from ages two to six and do a video for that. And it all comes back to some of these kind of resources we got through this grant. So just wanted to share some of those things and now I'll, I'll move back to, to budget stuff. But I, I don't get here too often to get to talk to you about all the things going on, so thank you for giving me a moment to do that. So I also usually start my presentation by introducing a board member or two who comes along with me. And I just wanted, they're not here tonight, but I wanted to just acknowledge what an important part they play in our budget. So they are a governing board, which means that they have oversight of our expenditures and budgets, one of their key things that they do. And they work with us from the start on the budget process. So I always just want to make sure I mention that I appreciate that. So all through the process, I work back with them. So we'll go to the next one here. So turning to the budget, just cutting to the bottom line, this is the proposed expenditures for fiscal year '22. It's the number that Jim gave us as a figure to work towards. We've made a few adjustments to make that work. As you look at the different lines, you'll see that the significant area of increase, the only one really is personnel. And that's just due to, not an increase in personnel, but reflects those scheduled pay increases that Jim talked about last night for union and non-union personnel and for insurance increases we always have. So I, this budget's really, I guess I would say, pretty routine. This is the, similar to what happens every year, is that the personnel amount increases and then we make adjustments to make it fit with our bottom line. So I'll talk about a few of the cuts that we made to fit in as I go through the rest of the presentation. I always put in this expenditure history and it's because of my degrees in history, so I'm always looking at historical perspective on things. But I went ahead and kept it in, as I did from past years, so she could see a little bit of our expenditures over the years and how that looks. So fiscal year '22's proposed expenditures fall right between fiscal year 11 and 12 in terms of where we were for total expenditures. So we had a decline in fiscal year 14 and 15. We made some significant cuts. And then after that, just sort of small increases, again, similar to this year, that same kind of routine where it's, personnel costs went up. We made some adjustments to stay within the parameters we were given, just as we're doing again this year, without adding any new expenses or areas of expense. So again, a little historical perspective on revenue. And you can see that it increased and then just pretty much it stayed steady. That main driver of that is our ten-year 28E agreement with West Burlington, Middletown, and Des Moines County for rural residents. And so previous to fiscal year 12, we did those contracts on an annual basis. We went to a ten-year agreement. And that current agreement really better serves everyone, including the community members. They know they're going to have library services year after year. And the entities that are funding this also know a predictable routine cost that they're going to have. These agreements run through fiscal year '22, so we'll be looking at these again in the near future. If you look at the last few years, you can see there's a little bit of a, a decline for fiscal year '22. So I wanted to just briefly address that. That small decrease is fines collection. We've had, that has been declining over the years, in part for some new things that we've offered, like pre-overdue notices, text messaging abilities, automatic renewals. And so people are, we're just not having as many late, late things being returned. Things are getting more often returned on time because they, we have more contact with our users, so they're aware when things are, are due. And so there's less fees collected. And if you look at the percentage on that sheet, it looks like a pretty big percentage decline, but the dollar amount is not particularly a large amount. So when you take the expenditures and the revenues and you put them together for that general fund impact, you can see that our fiscal year '22 general fund impact is a little less than it was back in fiscal year '09, thirteen years ago. So just to give, again, some perspective on where our budget is this time through. As I mentioned, fiscal year '22 personnel is the, the part that, is where we have the cost increase. That about three percent increase that you see on there was a little bigger. We did, to fit our parameters, get that bottom line, we made some adjustments to staffing. We decreased total hours for shovers and clerks a little bit. That in the end took us from sixteen point nine FTE to sixteen point five. It's a small decline, but I think it's still worth noting in the context of our staffing history. So again, my, my next slide's a little history one again. So for personnel level, staffing levels, putting all that into context, in fiscal year two, which is my first year being at the Burlington Library, we had twenty-two FTE. Now we're at less than seventeen, and so that means that we've lost about five full-time equivalent people. So there were several positions eliminated, others were changed, and we have done all that through attrition when we needed to. And it also shifted the balance, so now we have more part-time staff members than we do full-time. So the majority of our staff work twenty hours or less. So I know I've discussed this in the past, some of the ways in which we were able to use efficiencies to help us in this as we had fewer staff members, as we moved to our new facility in 2006. It's been quite a while now. I still keep talking about it, but it's, it's been a while. But at that time, we had two circulation desks. We had one downstairs for the youth area, one on the, the main floor. So we don't have to do that anymore. We also typically only staff the youth desk that we have during summer reading hours. And the staff now can re-shell by just pushing a cart down the aisles versus having to go between multiple floors and upstairs and all of that. So those kind of efficiencies help. Thanks to funding from the Library Foundation, we also went to RFID tags at the beginning of our move to the new facility. Much more efficient for check-in and checkout than the previous system. And they also funded self-checkout stations for us. Those also are helpful. I think, you know, most importantly though, we have a great staff. They're very creative. They're very dedicated. They're really committed to and believe in the power of libraries to help people, individuals be successful and to help communities be successful because as individuals are successful, so are, are the communities. So they're a very, they're our most important resource and it, it makes sense that that's the area that the, the funding goes towards. At the same time, I always, you know, think it's important to recognize that losing some of those positions, like having a full-time maintenance person and janitorial person, it, it has its drawbacks. We also took our office coordinator down to twenty hours a week years ago. Last year, I was actually here talking about how, boy, we'd love to raise that a little bit. We certainly aren't doing that this year. We've tweaked in other areas, but she's really indispensable. And we went from four to three supervisors. We changed up our organizational chart along the way here too. But for the last, several years, we've been pretty steady with our staffing and this will just be a, a small tweak that we're putting in this year to make the budget puzzle work. So just briefly to go over the different areas, administration, that's me and our halftime office coordinator. I say most of her work is behind the scenes, but it's very important to our whole team and especially to me. Our youth services, youth and family services section, no changes to staffing level there. And they're probably our most well-known staff members. They're doing so many programs and things like that. And the type of work that we've done over the years to support families as they build new learners, to support students as they go through school, it's a pretty well-known and appreciated service in our community. The technology and collection services section, a little bit of shift here just because this is the section that includes our shovers. That was a very small change in, in hours, but it all comes together to help. So this was a section that used to be two, got put into one when we had a supervisor leave. So through attrition, we were able to combine this department into one. So they, we do not, we're not part of the IT services through the city, so we take care of all that ourselves. And as I say, the nine people up there, it's really one who does most of that work for us. All the troubleshooting and the updates and things that we need, they do. Most of the staff members in this section are focused on the purchasing and receiving and selecting, cataloging, all those things that come with getting materials into the collection and making them available to people. As I say, this does also include our shovers. Most of our shovers, some work only four hours a week, some eight hours a week. They're very part-time. But also very important, and because if you, if things don't get put back where they're supposed to be and things don't stay organized, you can never find them. So it's an important part of what we do. Public services, we did have a little change here because of the clerks fall into this section. Our clerks are kind of like substitute teachers. I always say they're, they, they sub in at our service points when necessary. So their hours are very, very varied and they fill in as we need them. So, but this section does lots more than just staff, our public service points. And every staff member, including myself, end up working at public service points, so we're, we're all cross-trained in this area. But this is where you find interlibrary loan, home delivery for seniors, a lot of classes and things for adults. So marketing, all of that goes in this section. So not much change in those areas, but just I'd run through that for you. Went too far. So I, I know on the, the sheets there, they list contractual services and commodities as the other two things for, besides personnel. I usually just look at it as personnel and not personnel. So I call this our operating expenditures and just lump those together. So you can see, again, a little history of that, the decline that we had as we worked through budget cuts and then pretty stable, a little up and down there, but, but kind of in that same line over the last several years. of in that same line over the last several years. There always, because as we look at budgets and, again, try to make that puzzle work, we always are looking at our non-personnel sections as well to see, you know, where we, where we can continue to absorb some of those expenses. So, it's well below where it was, but not, not too much cutting, cutting done in that area. This time, if you look down those lines, you'll see just little adjustments here and there to base mostly on what we've had in the past for actual expenses. One area that's unique to the library, I went too far last time and now it won't go at all. There we go. Hopefully, I'll stay there and not, not jump too many times, I pushed it a few times there. One that's unique to the library is collection materials. No other department is buying books like we are, so those are unique line items. So, we, obviously, it's an important part of what we do, buying materials for our community members to borrow and download, to use online. So, this has been clearly a heavily impacted part of our budget historically. I try, when I look at where can we make some adjustments, I try not to touch this area because it has been reduced so significantly. But I wanted to give you just a little overview, the little pie chart here, of how we use our collections budget, pretty, getting pretty close to equal between youth services, adult services, and online tools in terms of how we're spending that money. The one area that there's a decline this year is in subscriptions. That's our newspapers and our magazines. And part of why we can make that adjustment is because some magazines no longer exist, you may have noticed, some of them have just gone away. So, we have had less expense that way. But another piece is that we were designated as a recipient for an annual gift through a fund in the Community Foundation. And so, each year, we use that gift to purchase all of our newspapers and then some of our magazines. So, we've been really fortunate. I think this may be our third year now that we've received that. The, the individual whose fund it was, is in memory of is, was, you came to use the newspapers and magazines a lot, so we thought that was a, a good fit and appropriate use for those funds.
That's awesome. How much was that award for? Do you remember, possibly?
It's, it's around four thousand dollars a year.
Wow, that's awesome.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, and the fact that it's ongoing is, is really nice.
More people should consider memorials to the library.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and this was a gift to the Community Foundation, and they, I think they have four or five different places that get money every year out of that fund. So, I know Jim just talked about capital improvement plan, and I always say every year, well, we're not in it. There was a time, many, many years ago, when we would get some capital funding for, like, computer replacement, things like that. But that, that stopped as part of past budget cuts. So, all the equipment needs and projects that we do that would qualify to go into capital expenses, we instead rely on private donations. So, that's why gifts like that one are very important to us. And I'm going to talk just a little bit about some of the other ways, too. So, other funding and support that we, we use to make everything happen, that we do. We, you know, we take very, seriously our responsibility as stewards of tax dollars and really try to use what we're allocated very best we can, and part of that means looking for other sources of funding. So, over the last year, we had received a, a gift from the Alliant Foundation that we use towards a new toddler section. We received a gift from the Burlington Fine Arts League, which sadly, that'll be our last gift from the Burlington Fine Arts League as they are disbanding. We use that for performers and supplies, things like that. I had a meeting today at noon with our Library Foundation, and when it comes to things, like I mentioned, we used to have sometimes in capital improvement plan, equipment, like our computer staff, computer replacement, those sort of things. They just funded that today for us with, through a grant. So, they, helping us with computer replacement as well as a new server, and we're getting Chromebooks that we can check out to our users. Earlier, they helped us more than double our mobile hotspot collection that we circulate to people in the community. And I'll tell you, they're out all the time, about thirty of them, and they're out for, you can check them out for a week, and they, they stay out for people. And so, not only do people need sometimes that internet connection at home, but they also need the device. So, we're going to pair up some Chromebooks with mobile hotspots, and people can check that out, or they can check out just the, the hotspot. So, we, we just got those today, so that'll be coming soon. But thanks to the Library Foundation for all the start that program as well. Over the last year, they also, that's why I put the little light bulb up there to remind me, they also helped fund our parking lot light conversion. And that conversion now completes converting all of our lighting to LED, or, you know, energy-efficient lighting. So, that's one of those that is important, both because we have the lights better, better efficiency, but it's long-term, long-term impact to, to have more efficient lighting. So, we're really pleased to have them help us out with that. As I mentioned before, they helped with the new self-check stations, we just got some new ones in, we got new security gates in, in this last year. Those projects all thanks to funding through the Library Foundation. Oh, and they remodeled our old coffee shop. So, quite a few significant projects over the last year were done through that. We also have a Friends the Library group that raises funds. They raise funds primarily for the programs that we offer. So, in terms of, like, they'll, they'll purchase supplies, we have performers, they'll help with those kind of things. And they've, they've helped with other things along the way as well, but that's one of their primary areas. And our TICOS group, I have them up there with the flag, because they are a junior optimist club, and they participate in the Avenue of Flags and actually get a little funding for that. So, they also get funding from our vending machine at the library. This is, I'm just, I know I talk about them every year, but I'm just very proud of this group because all of our teen programs, they're, they're getting their own funding to make them happen. So, if they're going to have snacks, if they're going to have, need supplies for whatever they're doing, or bringing in performers, they're, they're getting the funding for it. And the TICOS group is not just about raising funds, they also have, they have officers, they held, they hold meetings with agendas, you know, so it's, it's also a leadership training and team skills building group. And they also have continued to meet all through this unusual time, doing, and continue to do some projects as well. So, they're a great group, a great group of kids, helping out the community in different ways. Also, I just wanted to mention a thank you to the Murray Foundation, who for several years has supported our outreach visits to preschools. And again, we've been continuing to do as many of those as we can now, whatever the organization would like from us, we've been able to do that. Rotary Club continues to be our primary source of funding for the Babies Need Book Program, which gives a book and literacy information to families who have new babies out at Great River. And they also help support other projects as well, that's one of the primary ones. And Kiwanis has helped with support, say, the optimists through our TICOS group. So, lots of different ways. I mentioned earlier the STEM grants that we've gotten, we've gotten, you know, six of those now. One of the things that's in that little stack of brochures for you is the Summer Reading brochure that's going to go out to businesses this week. This just came in, it's got printed for us. So, we're already planning Summer Reading two thousand and twenty-one. I'm, I would just like to jump right to summer personally, so I'm, I'm glad that we are planning this now. But Summer Reading is something that's nowhere in our budget documents here. So, all the funding for the prizes, for the performers, for the supplies, anything we need to make Summer Reading happen comes from private donations. And so, each year, we send this out to different businesses that, that help us out. And last year, we did, the last summer was a, you know, a strange Summer Reading program, but we did some scavenger hunts, so you could go to local businesses and take your picture with the decal there, that they were a sponsor of Summer Reading. So, that was, we had a lot of people send us in pictures as they went around into the different businesses. That's that picture here on the front. So, if you know anyone who might want to consider being a sponsor, you know, pass this on to, to them. Just one of the ways we're able to offer as many things as possible using, of our kind of funding we, we can. So, I think, yeah, that was actually a little longer than I thought it was going to be, but I want to come back to our, our mission statement here, because it really drives everything that we do, so that was a good place to end. We're all, all of the work that we do is really about providing people in our community with opportunities and helping to, to walk beside them and help them be successful. And, you know, all of that then contributing to our overall goal of being a great place to live, work, and play. So, that is everything, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions, anybody? So, as always, it's a very detailed, very thorough presentation, always impressed by the amount of work you guys pull off.
Thank you. Well, I say, if any, if you, I didn't, I may have talked more about it than I initially intended to, but I am always happy to answer questions about services or anything related to the library at any time. So, thank you. And I, I will say that I, I have, I'm not, I'm not going to leave because I don't want to hear Don, really not, but I do have a board meeting at five-thirty to go to, so thank you for having me go first. I wasn't sure if I'd be able to make that meeting, but, yeah, I just wanted to, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now you feel our pain.
Yes.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, thank you.
No, no, give it to somebody that's going to have to listen.
We're ready when you are, Mr. Fiddy.
You have your time?
No, actually, I don't. Robert said, "Thank you, Ron," I didn't know what you heard himself.
Thank you.
Oopsie, oopsie, sorry. Oh, this wrongs my ears.
Thanks, Tom.
Got to be quick, Don's throwing them.
Oh, we, hey, Robert, we've got a presentation, we'll get those up to you as well.
Good man.
Do you want the clipper? Because that'll free air, so.
All right. As, this will look very familiar to you, we should be able to go through it relatively quickly. First, we'll speak about the wastewater treatment facility. Next slide, there's a span of our responsibilities. We operate and we maintain the treatment plant. We operate and maintain, there's fifteen lift stations or pumping stations scattered throughout the city. The three largest are located, one's east of Case, that's what we call Silver Street. The largest one is there on the riverfront, south of the auditorium by the boat ramps, that's Market Street. And the next largest one that we have is South Street, which is directly across from the wastewater plant on the city side of the tracks, down below what used to be a fire station, and now it's some kind of an office right there. We also manage and operate the equalization tanks, there's two tank, equalization tanks. They're kind of holding tanks for extra wastewater in a separated collection system that will hold that water until there's space for it downstream. In this case, that water eventually goes through the Market Street Lift Station to the wastewater treatment plant. Currently, we have two. I think you heard the city manager mention yesterday about a future equalization tank for the Cascade Drainage Basin. So, that would be the third one when it's built. We have a laboratory at the wastewater plant, we do sampling of the plant processes, we do go out, we sample out in the collection system, we have some small facilities bring water to us for testing, and we perform that analysis for them. We conduct the industrial pretreatment program. There are certain industries that fit within categories that the federal government indicates that they must be regulated. That regulation can either be done by the state, or in our case, since we have a approved industrial pretreatment program, we conduct that program. And we have eight industries in our program currently within our collection system. We issue permits to them, just like the state issues permits to us, and that permits stipulates certain quality of water that they must meet in order to discharge to us. They have daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, semi-annual monitoring requirements and submit reports to us on a monthly basis, just as we do to the state. And we review those reports for analysis to ensure that the water does meet the criteria that's specified within their permit. We, too, go out three times a year and we conduct what we call surveillance sampling. We go out and we collect samples on our own and compare the results that we get with the results that they're submitting to us on a regular basis. We also de-water and land-apply, the byproduct of wastewater treatment, which is commonly called sludge, but the correct term now is bio solids. Next slide. The plant went through an upgrade in, it was designed in two thousand and ten, it went online in two thousand and twelve. This slide shows that currently, the plant's design limits is to take up to twenty-point-eight million gallons a day, and we're, to take an average, we can average ten-point-eight-five. If you took twenty-point-eight-five daily through there, the, the treatment would deteriorate over time. But the average wet weather flow, the plant's really designed to handle is ten-point-eight-five. There are three fiscal years showing the peak flow rate, that's the rate that it was coming in at any given minute into the plant in that fiscal year. We also have up there the twenty-four-hour maximum flow that we took through within a twenty-four-hour period. In nineteen-twenty, fiscal year nineteen-twenty, that was fifteen-point-three million gallons in that, a twenty-four-hour period. The minimum flow that we took through the plant in nineteen-twenty was three-point-one. That's quite a difference between the minimum and the maximum flow, and that's the result of an aging collection system or partially combined sewer system as what we have here. And so, also, you have a twenty-four-hour average over that fiscal year, and down below, I have the total precipitation during those fiscal years. I believe thirty-seven-point-nine inches of precip is the average that I've used historically for Burlington, what we would typically see in twenty, or in a calendar year. And thirty-six-point-nine, that was fairly close to that. But you can see, in seventeen-eighteen, we had only thirty-four-point-eight inches of rain, and the average flow that year was four-point-six million gallons. The next year was a wet weather year, and of course, the average flow was higher, six-point-six. And nineteen-twenty was a more average year, in between the low and the high, and it's, that's where the flow rate fell, the average flow. Next slide.
Don?
Yes?
As the sewer separation takes place and there's less stormwater running through the plant, are those going to be max levels and just go down with time?
No, actually, the equalization tanks, because they capture and hold X, what we will consider excess or elevated flows that are coming in through the sewer system, if the downstream system can't handle it, such as the Market Street Lift Station, it has a certain footprint, a certain capacity. Once it reaches capacity, then the design is such that extra flow is held in these equalization tanks upstream, waiting for space downstream. And so, the design is to maximize the capacity of the downstream collection system, the downstream capacity of the plant to utilize that. And so, those peak flows and those maximum flow rates will probably tend to remain the same, even with the separation. There, there will be a twenty-four-hour period where the system is maxed out. Over time, you should see a reduction in the average flow, and you also may see the minimum flow go down. Now, the minimum flows that you see there are typically winter-related flows where the ground- Um, over time, you should see a reduction in the average flow, and you also may see the minimum flow go down. Now, the minimum flows that you see there are typically winter-related flows, where the groundwater is frozen, everything is froze up solid, you're not getting a lot of, uh, you don't have sump pumps in this, out in the collection system running and that type of thing, and so that allows the flows to subside. And typically, those low flow figures are from very, very cold months or very, very, very dry periods, which we have had dry years as well. Next slide. Also, as part of the improvements that was done, uh, designed in 2010 and completed in 2012, uh, our organic loading capacity went to 9,100 pounds of BOD, biochemical oxygen demand. Uh, again, you have your three fiscal years, and with 1920 being 5,100, and again, beneath you see the precipitation for those 12-month periods listed, and, uh, wet weather flow, such as we saw in 1819, can actually reduce the amount of loading to the plant because we have combined sewer overflows. And so, it carries material out of the collection system and to the receiving stream, certainly in a diluted, diluted fashion, but it still goes to the river. Uh, we're probably at approximately 65% of our capacity at the plant, hydraulically and organically. Next slide. So, our fees primarily come from the sewer fees that are on the individual's water bill. Next line, next slide. In my budget, I have, uh, administration, which is, uh, prefix is 5401, and that's the administration section of the budget. Personnel is within the 400 series, uh, budget line items. Uh, I have two full-time persons, myself and my office coordinator. Uh, the contractual services are the 500 series. When we pay someone to do work for us, that's paid out of the 500 series. Uh, two, uh, uh, line items within the administration, 5401 budget, 529, that's the billing services that, uh, we are charged by the Water Works. They bill, they send out their water bill, and on that line item, in that bill, a line item for sewer fees, wa, uh, stormwater fees, trash fees. Two-thirds of what they charge the city for billing comes out of the administrative budget from the wastewater plant, line item 529. 581, uh, that's for payments to, uh, West Burlington. There are several houses within the city of Burlington which are actually sewered to the West Burlington Collection System. It was, uh, more prudent, feasible, economical to go that way than to try to get it into our system, and so even though they're within the city of Burlington's property, they actually discharged to West Burlington, and West Burlington charges us a fee for that service. Next slide.
Don, do you kind of have any idea how many homes that is? Just on a roundabout?
I would guess it's probably less than 20.
Okay.
Uh, transfers out, that's the 900 series. Uh, that's, uh, in the current proposed budget that comes to 1.56 million dollars. It's less than a tenth of a percent increase over last year's budget. Uh, there are the dollar amounts that are listed in the proposed budget for debt service, administrative transfers, and expense transfers. Uh, next slide. In the wastewater budget, then we have the operation and maintenance cost for the facility with the prefix 5402. Uh, that facility, uh, pertains to the plant, the 15 lift stations, and costs associated with the two equalization tanks. The, uh, 400 series of 5402 is for the plant personnel. Uh, we have 15 full-time positions and one part-time position. We are a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week man facility. Much of the time, there's only one person on-site, has responsibilities for the entire site of the wastewater plant, as well as if, when there's an alarm that goes off at one of the 15 lift stations, they have to deal with that alarm condition. Certainly, help is only a phone call away. Next slide. Uh, continuing, uh, contractual services, uh, that's the 500 series. Uh, 511 is a relatively large number. That includes, uh, private lab fees. We send, uh, samples off to primarily, uh, the state hygienic lab at the University of Iowa, and we also have our audit fees in 511. Um, 519, uh, that's another line item, and, uh, once a year, I come to you with a contract agreement, contractual agreement with H.R. Green, uh, and, uh, that is, uh, proposed for $20,000, and, uh, that is where we can call them when we have an issue arise and we need some guidance or looking for some input, and they will, uh, bill us according to the time that they end up spending, replying to our questions and getting us the information we need. Next slide. 543, that's one of our large line items. That's for the light and power, the electric, and again, that's for the electric that's used at the plant, uh, the lift, 15 lift stations. Uh, there will be some stormwater lift stations ultimately that will be going in on the riverfront. I'm sure that will be part of that bill as well. Uh, currently, we have used, uh, some electric submersible pumps on the riverfront to deal with stormwater collection and discharge with the seawall being there, and, uh, also, uh, power for the equalization tanks. Next slide. Commodities are 600 series, uh, one of the larger ones is 622 chemicals for various purposes. Uh, we use chemicals in the collection system to deal with fog, fats, oil, and grease, and odor treatment in the collection system. We spend money on de-watering the biosolids. You have to mix the polymer with it to help it to, uh, condition the material, release the water, and, and coagulate. Uh, disinfection, we currently use chlorine. Some facilities, uh, use other means to disinfect, but we use, uh, old reliable chlorine. Uh, we also purchase lab chemicals out of that line item. Next slide. Capital items are the 700 series. Um, we are proposing to spend a lot of money this upcoming fiscal year, uh, $1,072,900. Uh, we're looking at painting the screenings building, that is the metal building that's on the south side of the Market Street Lift Station, uh, down on the riverfront. Um, that's been there since, I think it was in early 2002. Uh, recoat the, one of the final clarifiers, one of the four, paint the headworks building on the inside. Now that we have the odor, uh, control facility operational, the air quality within the building is going to be better, and we'll see less corrosion occurring because of the ga, off gases from the wastewater. Having that in place, we feel it's time to repaint the inside of that building. The SCADA system, that pertains to supervisory control and data acquisition system. That basically is the heartbeat of the wastewater plant. It's an automated facility. Things come on and go off based on flow rates, well levels, um, uh, and, uh, the alarm system, notifying the one person who's on duty, much of the time, by themselves, that there's an issue here, there's an issue there that needs to be addressed. But it also, as I said, controls how many pieces of equipment are running, uh, which is determined by the operating conditions at the time. The digester cover repair, that was something that we were not expecting. Um, we have a serious problem with our digester cover on the underside. It's painted both on the top and the bottom. The top's actually insulated, but the underside has a protective coating to protect the metal from hydrogen sulfide and sulfuric acid that forms within the digestion process, and that paint, uh, we found and taken it down earlier this year, is failing, and we were not expecting to see that. Uh, it's outside the warranty period, there's nothing to be done. Uh, we toyed with doing something with it then versus doing something later, and, uh, I elected to wait to a later date, and we put it back online, and, uh, we'll be taking it down again this next fiscal year. Uh, the influent, plant influent line, uh, and, uh, also, capacity issues of the plant. The plant currently is not being utilized to its fullest capacity because there's a bottleneck up at the start of the plant. But, uh, once the water gets past that bottleneck, then it, the plant could actually handle some more water. Not necessarily a significant amount, uh, with the existing structure. There are other ways to handle additional water. Through the, uh, master sewer plan, it indicated that ultimately, that plant could in the future see as much as, twice as much flow as, as it sees now. That plant could not possibly handle that much water. Uh, we would likely be looking at some type of a mechanical flash treatment system that would give you partial treatment, but good enough to co-mingle with the effluent of the mechanical plant that we do have, and the two mixed together could still meet permit limits, and that's what our hopes are. But that $350,000 is intended to try to maximize the use of the facility that we have, plus enable us to, uh, address the problem we currently have with the plant influent line, which we are currently working on right now. Um, we haven't taken it apart to fix it, we've got parts that we're preparing to order to do so. But some of that cost will probably take place yet this fiscal year. Next line. Uh, also, we have a capital item in the sewers, that's for a small lift station reconditioning, and then we have, uh, money in there to replace a pickup truck. So our total CIP for the proposed fiscal year is 1.13 million dollars, which is actually a 224% increase over what the current year is. A lot of that has to do with that sewer line, the plant influent line, and that digester cover. Next slide. Other, uh, future CIP items noteworthy are listed there. I believe you have this information, uh, in front of you for fiscal year '23. A vehicle, exterior, painting, one of four final clarifiers, lab fume hoods, track skid loader. Again, the SCADA system, that's being phased in over a number of years. And then there's that big one there, that flood protection. Now, that flood protection is to, uh, provide, uh, a wall at the wastewater plant. It'll utilize, or the intent is utilize, existing walls of existing tanks which, uh, stick up above the ground far enough that they, in themselves, can serve as part of that wall and are structurally able to provide that protection. But once you build a wall around the wastewater plant to keep the river out, the water won't leave the plant by gravity. I mean, you can't, you can't hook a gravity tank to go out to a river, which is higher than what the elevation of the tank is. So, that cost also, I believe, has built into the cost of actually building a large lift station, larger than the Market Street Lift Station, so that if that wall is utilized, you have a high river stage, you'll be able to pump the water that's coming to the plant and treat it, and turn around, and force it out into the receiving stream. Uh, 50, or 20, fiscal year '24, um, several items there. Again, another portion of the SCADA system. Uh, the natural gas boilers, um, are on that list there. Hopefully, uh, we do maintain those, we're hopefully, hopefully going to extend the life of those boilers. Uh, that might be something where we could phase that in, I don't know. Next slide. Fiscal year '25, um, the fourth of the final clarifiers, and, uh, '26, there's that floating, uh, sludge storage facility, if we ever comes down to where we actually need to do something. Thus far, we've been successful of avoiding doing that. Next slide. So, the total proposed budget for fiscal year '22, the 5401, 5402, the total, then you have the transfers out, uh, which are the, uh, in the 900 series under the prefix 5401, and so then the total expenditures for fiscal year is 5.8 million, or a 14% increase over what we have this current fiscal year. Next slide. Uh, as the city manager, I think, uh, mentioned yesterday in his general overview, uh, we're looking at a 3% increase to the fees for the non-metered customers and a 10% increase for the metered customers. Next slide. Uh, as the city manager, I think, uh, mentioned yesterday in his general overview, uh, we're looking at a 3% increase to the fees for the non-metered customers and a 10% increase for the metered customers. Next slide. Significant issues. Um, we're in the midst of our NPDS permit renewal review. Uh, the permit has been submitted. Typically, wastewater permits are five-year permits. Um, we have one more sampling that we have to do, and analysis to submit, to have a complete set of samples. The current permit expires in May of this calendar year. It's not uncommon for the state to take longer than the six months they allow themselves to review and reissue a new permit, so I'm not sure when that will come out. But that, it can be, could be a significant i, issue, uh, when that is, uh, issued to the city, because there in green, it says reduce nutrients to surface waters. The current permit required us to have a consultant evaluate our process and identify several technologies that could be used to reduce the nutrient loading within our wastewater plant discharge or effluent. Uh, that's, the analysis was performed, they identified a technology they felt would best fit our purposes within our existing facility, and the projected cost of making those improvements was $6 million, with an annual operating cost of $300,000. Um, the typical timing is that the next permit to be issued, which is the one that's under review now, would embrace that result of that study and say, "Okay, uh, we agree, go ahead and construct that facility and start taking actions to reduce your nutrient loading." That is one of the items that has been included in the discussion with the state pertaining to this consent agreement, looking at our sewer master plan, looking at the integrated planning, and there were hopes of being able to push that particular project, that's $6 million project, out into the future. Uh, to my understanding, they have not concluded those discussions, so I don't really know where that is. I don't know if that's something I'm, I suspect it's not in the public works, uh, capital item list, and it's not in mine, because I was anticipating that we would be successful. Um, that is a big question, whether or not that will come into play.
If you look in there, there is a $50,000 set aside for a review of the nutrient production strategy. Maybe I'll cover that in his presentation.
Available storage for biosolids, uh, the flood mitigation, and of course, as mentioned earlier, uh, the master sewer plan identified a number, provided a plan for the future, identifying priorities, things we need to do, uh, bottlenecks, that type of thing. And, uh, so those are all major issues dealing with the wastewater treatment facility. Next slide. And, there's my favorite, one of my favorite slides, reminds me of myself when I was growing up with my brothers. We liked to play in the water. And that is probably combined wastewater. Next slide. So, do you have any questions?
I'm just, um, I guess I haven't paid attention with the, with the flood wall. Can you access the facility if it, if it's flooded like in 2008?
Um, yes.
You can?
The west side of the facility, the access road is high enough to where we could get to the administration building, which, to me, that's the most important part.
Yeah.
But we did have water around much of the process areas.
Yeah, I thought I remembered that.
The, the wall will help protect, prevent that.
Okay. I was just trying to envision that. The biosolids building, and that, right now, that's the long building down there?
We rent space, we lease space from Burlington River Terminal within the Rutherford Building.
Yeah, okay.
Which sits on Burlington Northern Railroad ground.
Right.
So, they pay fees to the railroad, and we pay fees to Burlington River Terminal for leasing space within that building.
The, the intake line, I know you mentioned it in here, but did you determine exactly what the problem was when we shut it down a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, it's got a hole in it.
Okay.
And, uh, we're working with a local contractor to get pipe here to replace that pipe as quickly as possible.
Is it significant?
Uh, it has the potential to be significant. Um, we are anxious, I am anxious, and we are looking to replace it as soon as we can. Instead of, uh, the complete, we did, we did find- Instead of the complete, we did, we did find at either end that the concrete wells during that initial inspection were in what we considered good conditions. I was very surprised to see the condition of the wells. We still, we did think about replacing the entire 30 feet between wall and wall, but that, the ends of those 30 foot, that 30-foot section has these two very large cast iron valves, which would not be readily available to us. We cannot afford to wait to get those valves available. So we're going to narrow the scope of this repair. And we believe that we can accomplish that repair in the same timeframe that it took us to do the initial investigation. So we're thinking what we can do it within a 12 to 14-hour period with minimal bypassing. But it will require the same type of shutdown and bypassing as what the initial investigation took.
And from a cost standpoint, that's reflected in this? Or is that coming out of the emergency sewer fund?
Um, I'm not really sure how we're going to, where the money's, I'm sure it's coming out of the sewer fund. It's not budgeted for within this fiscal year. It's probably, is factored in as part of the cost of that $300,000 in the CIP.
What was the?
So that number should be lower if, once we do that section.
I'm just curious what the cost of that was going to be to repair that?
What we're looking at doing ourselves?
Yeah, right now.
I don't know.
Okay.
We're, we expect a price any day.
Okay.
On that.
Anybody else have any other questions for Don?
So Don, three to four times a year, we do that surveillance sampling.
Yes.
We always pass that with flying colors, right?
Uh, yeah, we, we have not found any significant issues with the water quality or the reports that have come to us. There, there are times when there is a parameter that is over what the permit limit calls for, but there are steps in place to deal with that, so.
That's what I, I wanted to hear, so I can pass that message on to my friends that insist they have to drink bottled water. Thank you.
Right. Okay, next.
I didn't have a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
Go ahead, Robert.
So we, we pay West Burlington to use their sewer for a couple of properties nearby. Do they use any of, do they use our sewer system at all? And do we charge them?
Not to my knowledge. I don't believe there are any properties in West Burlington's footprint that are currently soured to the City of Burlington's collection system. No.
Okay.
All right.
Ready to press on?
Yep. Solid waste. Again, there's the cart, lid fully closed, and hopefully people participate in the recycling program. Next slide. So we provide a basic service where we collect trash weekly. Again, lid's supposed to be fully closed on your cart. We also perform seven weeks of leaf collection in the fall, three weeks in the spring. A typical year, we have the citywide cleanup in the spring. And we also allow people to self-haul tree limbs, brush, material, wood waste to the landfill, and they need not pay for the disposal of that wood waste, as long as they have with them proof that they are a trash-paying customer of the City of Burlington. Next slide. We also, as part of your fee, you're paying for the recycling program services. Services that are provided is the curbside collection every two weeks. There's a 24/7 drop-off at the recycling center. They process and sell the recyclables that they market. They have an education program. They have the household hazardous chemical facility out at the landfill. And of course, all these services are contracted by us with the Des Moines County area recyclers. Next slide. The revenue for the solid waste program comes through via the trash fee that you pay on your water bill. We also sell those yellow trash tags to retailers who in turn sell them to our customers. They also, we also have, we get some revenue from private haulers that provide dumpster services out in City Right-Away. They pay a fee to have those dumpsters sit on City Right-Away. Next line, or next slide. People have cart options. They can go with a 35-gallon cart, or they can go with a 65, or they can go with a 95. Again, the idea is we want the lid fully closed. And of that fee, that monthly fee you are paying, $3.95 of that monthly fee is to pay for the recycling services I just mentioned. Next slide.
Does that include the 25 cent increase for this?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay, sorry.
So what do you do if you have trash that doesn't fit within your cart with the lid fully closed? Well, then you have to put it in a 33-gallon trash bag and attach a trash tag to that 33-gallon bag. If you have two bags, you have to have two tags, one on each bag. And in November of 2018, when we went to the cart program, the tag price was set at $4. Next slide. Additional options, if you want to avoid having tags, is to, you can get an additional 65-gallon cart to the cart you already have. That would add an additional $8.25 a month, or you can get an additional 95-gallon cart. Just have to make the necessary phone calls and contacts and be willing to do that. Next slide. And then, of course, another option to make sure your lid's closed with your current-sized cart maybe is to recycle. And there are people who recycle, and there are people who do not recycle. People don't break down their cereal boxes, or they throw away their gallon milk jug. And that takes up space within your cart. Now, the cereal boxes, I should clarify, that is not recyclable. That's paperboard.
I was just going to reel you in on that.
But breaking it down and folding it in half or whatever saves space. Your trash fee, again, that you pay on your water bill includes the $3.95 per month. And that price was as of July 1st of 2020. Next slide. The tag has other purposes. I won't go through that, but we do get calls periodically throughout the week where someone asks, I have an item I'd like to get rid of. How do I go about doing that? And some of the items are items that can be taken care of by using trash tags. Next slide. So in the solid waste budget, prefix 5301, the 400 series is the personnel cost, and we have seven full-time and one part-time individual. Then we have the contractual services, which is the 500 series. Out of line item 519, other professional services, we pay for temporary labor to flesh out our crew when we feel the need to have extra help to, to work within our programs. It's prevalent during our specialty programs, our leaf program, our citywide cleanup program. If we have injuries or health issues, that type of thing, we use them as well. Next slide. 524, that's the sanitation landfill services. We pay for the tipping fees for the household garbage, self-hauled brush, miscellaneous items, TVs and appliance and tires. And we also pay the monthly fee that's charged us by the Des Moines County area recyclers for the recycling services that they provide. And the fee we pay them is based on an average 9,650 households per month. Sometimes we have more customers than that, sometimes we have fewer customers than that. Next slide. Miscellaneous technical services, there's the other third of the fee that we pay for the billing services the water department provides us out of 529. Commodities is 600 series, capital outlay 700 series. We do not have any vehicle budgeted for this fiscal year, upcoming fiscal year. Next slide. We do have one for fiscal year 23, 24, and 25 capital items as seen there. Next slide. We have money that's transferred out of that series, 900, out of 912 administrative transfers. It's proposed to take $207,600, which is a 2% increase over last year. Next slide. So there's a summary of the various services, series, 400, 500, 600, 700, a total of 1.8 million, which is actually a 7% reduction. And then we have the transfer out, which is, that's 5.2, that's, is that what that was? Anyway, so it's a negative 6% on the proposed total expenditure. Next line. So the proposed increase to the trash fee is 15 cents for the trash and 10 cents passing on what the Des Moines County area recyclers are proposing to increase the recycling fee. So that totals up to 25 cents per month, and that would be applied to each of the size carts. An additional cart, it's 25 cents more a month for each of those items. And we're proposing that the trash tag would remain at $4. Next slide. Here's a history of the fee that people have been paying now. Prior to the cart program, which went into effect in November of 2018, we had 33-gallon cans, and now we have the 35-gallon cart. And you can see the history reading vertically. Each of those dates July of 2018, November of 2018, July of 2019, 2020, and then finally the proposed for 2021. So for trash fees, for the proposed, we're saying, taking it from 1055 to 1070, and the recycling household charge is from 395 to 405, which comes to a total of $14.75 per month for the standard 35-gallon trash cart. Next slide. So what's proposed to be on your water bill, if you're a 35-gallon user, again, you're talking about a monthly fee of $14.75, which is a 1.7% increase. Most water bills are three-month bills, so you're going to pay three times that, or you're going to go from $43.50 to $44.25 on a quarterly bill for trash services for a 35-gallon cart. Next slide. So reality disposal is no longer simple or cheap, and there have been changes to the solid waste program through the years, what people can simply just throw away in their trash. A lot of these things now require special handling, which is a headache. I understand people being upset. It's not like it used to be, as is the case in many situations. Things have changed through the years. Next slide. Next slide. So there is no such thing as away. When we throw anything away, it must go somewhere. Next slide. And my favorite slide is back. I shouldn't, but I'm going to have the garbage. Next slide.
That's the last one.
Question?
I see you have the Corrado can on the following fiscal year. Is that?
It's a part that wears. It was suggested to us that, that particular, it's a component of the entire automated truck, and that it does have a tendency to wear.
Sure.
And it was suggested that we, it's, it's somewhat of a quick disconnect. It's not that simple. There's more to it than that. But the idea would be to have one available, so, because if that truck goes down, well then that's a real issue.
Truck's down. But what my question was, that seems to be working now pretty well, that, that came, because I know there was some issues there.
It, it works. It, it does what it's supposed to do. There's pluses and minuses, as there are to any piece of equipment. The prices that you saw in the CIP list were for rear-load trucks like what we've used. I'm still not, I've still not given up on the idea of fully automated. I don't know if it's reasonable to think that we can do it everywhere. But I've talked to some communities, and surprisingly, they've told me they are using a fully automated truck in, in the alleys. And I have not taken the time to make that trip to that city, those cities, and look at their program that way. We are not picking up as many households within a normal day as what some places do. A lot of it has to do with terrain. A lot of it has to do where people park their cars. There's just a lot of issues. Trees, we've had issues with trees, little trees, not necessarily, I, I'll use the term low-hanging trees, but if the truck was shorter, then it wouldn't be a low-hanging tree. So, I mean, there, there are conflicts with the current system. It does save us using a second person on the route, but it has not been as efficient as I had hoped that it would be.
Okay, thank you.
Don, we increased the price of the trash tags. Has that reduced the number of people using, setting bags out?
Yes, we're certainly using fewer tags than what we were prior to the cart program.
So that helps us with our, our nuisance issue we were dealing with somewhat.
Are we taking more trash out, though?
Ah, next slide.
Here.
Okay, so the trash program, tons collected. Carts went in use in November 2018. If you look at 1718 fiscal year, the first number is the total tons of trash, and the right-hand number on the other side of the slash is per week. And then you had the citywide cleanup below that, and total tons of trash and garbage, the citywide cleanup plus the garbage that we pick up. 1819, that would have been the first full year of the trash cart program. And you can see the numbers went up from the, well, almost by 500 tons. Not quite. Now, water, rain shouldn't come into play, because if the lid is closed, then the garbage is not getting wet. When the 33-gallon carts, a lot of carts, a lot of cans didn't have lids, and they just, you know, it would rain on there. Then between 1819 and 1920, we had a 1% increase. So there's two complete years where the carts have been used. So we did see an increase that first year, which I, does not surprise me, would see some backsliding.
Do we have a lot of flooded basements, though? Would that contribute to soggy debris?
Oh, there's a lot of variables that come into play. There, there just are. There's a lot of variables.
Do you think, do you think COVID has had a, an impact on the amount of trash, whether it's less or more than what it might be in a, in a more traditional year?
Well, I, I can't help but believe that it has had an effect, but why exactly? I think people are worn out, and I think people are stressed, or have been stressed by what's gone on over the last year, if you will. And people don't practice and follow the same type of routines that they used to. And I think, I think that can affect how active people are in recycling. Now, one thing I will point out is if you go to the next slide, it's about recycling. Again, 1718, in 1819, you see a drop in the number of tons that they picked up at curbside. And then we had a 1% increase in how much they picked up curbside in the last, or 1920. Now, at the city departments, that's really not relevant. That's where we go around, and we pick up recyclables from the various departments. And then finally, the last one is the 24/7 drop-off at the recycling center. And you can see where the numbers have, well, they're pretty close to what they were in 1819, and a little bit higher than what they were in 1718. So, I mean, people are still recycling. I don't know, I can't explain the numbers. But I do think COVID certainly has an impact on people's mental state.
Well, I was talking about, are we collecting more trash or less trash?
Because people are going out and...
Yeah. Well, they're not going out. I mean, they're eating more at home, so they have more trash as a result of that. Maybe they're spending more time doing interior cleaning.
You'd almost have to do a, a truck eval, you know, content evaluation, landfill years and years and years ago, when they were trying to determine or meet reduction guides that the government was looking for in recycling and such. They used to take dump truck load, or take truckloads and sort them and go through them and try to classify the material that was in there. I'd almost think you'd have to do that to determine, you know, and come up with some type of scenario.
We're not going to do that.
No, I, I don't see that happening.
I'm not volunteering for that study, thanks.
I don't see that happening.
You helped the sludge.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions for Don, then? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Don.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I should note the time. Everybody gives Don a hard time. And I should note the time, everybody gives Don a hard time. Very good job.
Don rocked it.
Lightning speed.
Lightning.
Forty-seven minutes. What was it? Forty-seven. Forty-seven minutes total?
That's a record, I think, for him.
Do you, do you have anything else, Jim?
No.
Okay. So what, what was presented tonight will fit within the budget you're going to present. Just for clarification.
What we have here tonight is, again, a balanced budget. We talk about the, he mentioned the rates that we're looking to change. Those are the, we covered those yesterday as well. We are done with talking about budgets for tonight. More next Wednesday.
All day.
It's supposed to be a long session. What time do we start?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty on Wednes, next Wednesday morning, so.
They said you're making breakfast, right?
You want to eat, you don't want to eat that. Anything that I'm involved with, you don't want to eat.
I can make bagels and steamed cheese, you guys like that?
That's fine. All right, well, thank you, everybody. Let's get the heck out of here.